Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
Realized by the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fitch. Councilmember Gray.
Present.
Councilmember Clancy.
Here.
Councilmember Trachis.
Present.
Councilmember Harder.
Here.
Mr. Presiding Officer, you have a quorum.
Is there a motion for approval of the Journal of the Meeting of May 22, 2019?
I move to approve the Journal of the Meeting of May 22, 2019.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. May 22, 2019, Journal is approved.
I move to suspend the rules for the purpose of adopting and presenting a resolution honoring Hazel Erby, Councilwoman for the First District.
Second. Second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The rules are suspended. Please read the resolution.
Yes, sir. Resolution Number Two, introduced by Councilmembers Trachis, Trachis for Fitch, Walton Gray, Clancy, and Harder. Resolution, whereas Hazel Erby's initial foray into elective office was University City Democratic Committee Woman, and subsequently she was elected to the St. Louis County Council in 2004 in a special election to serve out an unexpired term in the first council district seat, thereby becoming the first African-American woman to serve on the council. And whereas Councilwoman Erby became known for both her ability to collaborate and her dogged determination, and was re-elected to serve the good people of the First Council District in 2006, 2010, 2014, and 2018. And for 15 years, she served them and all the people of St. Louis County with honor, integrity, humor, and humility. And whereas during her tenure, Councilwoman Erby proved herself to be a true servant leader as a thoughtful, hard-working, honest, passionate, and compassionate member and chair of council committees too numerous to list, and in multiple terms as council chair and vice chair. And whereas while throughout her life, Councilwoman Erby has admired, praised, and emulated those who have struggled against adversity, she recognized that much of that adversity is due to injustices, inequity, and systemic denial of opportunity, and throughout her legislative career has employed her voice and her legislative vote to address those root problems. And whereas her proudest and most impactful accomplishment as a county councilwoman was shepherding to final adoption of historic minority inclusion ordinance that will ensure greater opportunity for minority and women-owned businesses. And whereas above all else, Hazel is a devoted wife to her husband Louis and a loving mother, grandmother, and aunt, not just to the children in her family, but to seemingly every child in her vicinity, offering her ear, shoulder, love, acceptance, advice, encouragement, and when needed, a push to take the action necessary to live their best lives. And whereas Hazel Erby has earned the respect of her colleagues on both sides of the political aisle for her judgment, her intellect, and her unyielding focus on putting the well-being of our county residents above all other interests. And whereas it is appropriate that the people of St. Louis County pause to appreciate their public servants, now therefore be it resolved by the County Council of St. Louis County, Missouri as follows. Section One, the County Council expresses their deepest gratitude and appreciation to their formal council colleague Hazel Erby, and although her wise counsel will be missed on the first floor, the council looks forward to working with her to lead St. Louis County to a better day as she embarks on her new mission on the ninth floor as St. Louis County Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion.
Thank you. It's my great pleasure to move for adoption of Resolution Number Two.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Fitch. Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on Resolution Number Two, there are four ayes and one absent.
Resolution Number Two is adopted. Is Hazel here?
Yep.
We have the resolution. So I think it would be appropriate for the council members to come down with me and present this along with the county executives, since you live with it too.
He served all his history. So thank you so much. I didn't realize. What's up with you? Like we've been talking. You're doing this again? People are going to fire me. I appreciate every pass. I wish I could call you all by name. This body here. I can't believe what was said about the nation. I don't know. Who came up without it? I'm not sure. I was born. So, um, it's so much to me. I've served on this council and to all the different persons who come to God and work with the God. I respect them. I appreciate them. I love all of them. I love the press. I've been seeing some beautiful things written about me. Special shout-out to you. Awesome, wonderful. Um, I think so. I don't know.
I've said for a long time that Hazel was the conscience of the council. She can't be that anymore. But she is the standard. She is the standard.
I forgot to all of them that are working by my side, my right hand. I love her. I'm going to get this working here from school. All of us have. I just, I love them so much. And they tell us everything. They're all the councilmen. They tell us what to do, when to do it, and listen to me. So, thank you. I'm sorry. I'm looking around. All of our police officers. There's that sometimes when we really need you there. And they were here for us, and I appreciate it. I love you. Thank you.
She's still here. She's still here. I kind of voted on something earlier.
It's weird seeing her in the audience.
We have no bid openings tonight, so we will move to communications.
Mr. Presiding Officer, we have no tax compromises or zoning matters this evening, so we'll move to road and bridge matters under Road and Bridge Matters, item number one, Seventh District.
Receive file, plan specifications, and detailed estimate of cost to be approved, and the Director of Procurement to be authorized to advertise for bids as recommended. Is there a second? Second.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Moving on to other communications, Mr. Presiding Officer, item number one.
Receive file, and the County Council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number two, Third District.
Please hold on the order of business. So ordered.
Item number three, Sixth District.
Receive file, and the County Council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number four, All Districts.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number five, Fifth District.
Receive, file, and the County Council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number six.
Receive, file, and the appropriation transfer be approved as requested. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number seven.
Receive, file, and the appropriation transfer be approved as requested. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number eight.
Receive, file, and the County Council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion through item number 10. And that will be the order.
Item number 11, First, Second, Third, Fourth, Fifth, and Sixth Districts.
Receive, file, contract in the amount not to exceed $471,828.58 be approved and awarded to Mayor Electric Company Incorporated, the lowest responsive bidder as recommended and authorized for revision to the existing traffic control devices be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 12.
Receive, file, and the County Council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number 13, Sixth District.
Receive, file, and the County Council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number 14, Sixth District.
Receive and file, and the change orders be approved as requested. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 15, Sixth and Seventh Districts.
Receive, file, contract in the amount not to exceed $6,121,185.32 be approved and awarded to J.M. Marshoots Construction Company, the lowest responsive bidder as recommended, and the authorization for revision to the existing traffic control devices be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 16, Seventh Districts.
Receive, file, and the change order be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 17, Second Districts.
Receive, file, and the County Council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number 18, First Districts.
Receive, file, and the County Council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, same motion through item number 21. And that will be the order.
Item number 22.
Receive, file, and the County Council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Moving on to add-ons, Mr. Presiding Officer, under other communications, item number one.
Receive, file, and the County Council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. And that will be the order. I'm sorry. Ethics Committee?
Report to the County Executive.
Okay, I'm sorry. Report to the County Executive. My apologies.
Thank you, Ernie. We've had another busy week in St. Louis County. First, I want to talk about the flooding. Fortunately, in 1993, St. Louis County took extraordinary efforts along with the federal government to buy out a lot of the homes that were affected by the flooding, and those homes would have all been flooded today if we would not have acted. But there are still many homes and businesses at risk. The county has been using every available resource to help those affected by the flooding. In South County, we are opening an emergency shelter for those who have been displaced. In North County, in some of the neighborhoods, we've been sandbagging, well, for the past couple of days. I was in Belle Fountain Neighbors today, this morning, for a few hours volunteering with the sandbagging operation. There were dozens of others volunteering as well. And if I would have known I was going to get my picture taken with Hazel, I would have gone home to change, but I'm sorry, I didn't have time to do that. But there are many organizations helping us in North County, from the Red Cross to even the business agents from the North County Labor Council, went home and changed and came out and helped us stack sandbags. And we had transportation and parks employees that were redirected from their regular duties to help us. The water came up a little more quickly than we expected this morning. We're going to have more talk about the flooding later on from the folks that are managing the minute-to-minute operations, but I did want to mention it. Many of you saw this afternoon that I announced a couple of new initiatives to reduce the historic disparities in pay based on sex and gender. Everyone who applies for employment with county government should have a meaningful opportunity to compete for jobs at a fair rate of pay, and they should be equitably paid for the work. Oftentimes, employees become trapped in pay equity because the salary for a new job is based on the salary at their current or previous job. We want to interrupt that cycle. So the county has stopped asking employees and applicants for employment for their salary information from their previous or current job. This practice disproportionately impacts women, particularly women of color. In addition, I've assembled a team of county employees and asked them to study how we could implement a number of initiatives that would help level the playing field for women. And I look forward to that report from that group this fall. I may have other good news. This evening, legislation will be introduced to allow the county to equip its police officers with body cameras and also to put dash cameras in all the police cars. These cameras will go a long way to fulfilling the responsibility to the public for greater transparency from our police department. In addition, they are designed to improve situational awareness and officer safety. This legislation is good for the public, and it's good for our officers. Funding from the contract will come from Proposition P, the public safety sales tax that was passed in 2017. The original legislation called for $2.7 million, but our police chief has negotiated with the vendor, and we'll be able to spread these payments out over six years at a significant cost savings to the county. So there will be some amended legislation that will be introduced next week. We have excellent news to share on the business front in St. Louis County. Last week, I participated in a ribbon cutting for Pfizer along with Councilman Harder in his district. This was a $236 million research and development facility in Chesterfield, and the new facility will bring 80 new jobs into St. Louis County and keep 450 high-tech, high-salary jobs in St. Louis County. St. Louis County faced stiff composition for this facility, and it's a sign of our skilled workforce that we won this contract. It's also recognition of our emerging reputation internationally for biopharma and science-related industries. On Friday, I also met with Mayor Leiter-Cruzen. The mayor and I discussed several areas where we could work together, including economic development, public health, and public safety. We really didn't make any decisions, but I think it was an important first step to lay the groundwork for communication. I anticipate many more meetings in the future. On Friday, I joined Mayor Cruzen right here in Clayton with the Board Chairman of St. Clair County, Mark Kern, and by-state officials kicking off the Metro Gateway Go Card Program. This is a regional program that allows teenagers and young adults to purchase half-priced passes on Metro over the summer months to travel to their jobs and doctor's appointments and other activities, and it removes an important barrier for young adults, which is most often transportation. Finally, I'd like to call on Spring Schmidt, our Acting Director of Health Department, and after that, Dan Drysward, our Acting Director of Transportation, to give us an update on the flood and our county's response to flooding. And feel free to delegate or bring additional staff with you if you would like. Spring?
Thank you very much. I appreciate this. This is a good opportunity to talk about some of the issues that we have with flooding. We're in preparation mode as well as kind of monitoring through a wide variety of things for the Health Department. The emergency operation expenditure has expanded their activities today, so we have stood up our health and medical desk, so we have it staffed. It'll be staffed from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. for the next several days because we're not expecting the river to really crest until Thursday. So we'll be coordinating communication among health and medical providers to make sure there aren't any injuries or anything like that that happened, both for the workers that are there as well as for residents that may be impacted as well. Our communicable disease nurses have already been out. They provide tetanus vaccinations to sandbaggers. So we were in Belle Fountain Neighbors yesterday. They've gone out on one call already today for people who may not have had a tetanus vaccine because that is a risk sort of during that process. And we haven't declared an emergency yet at the statewide level, so those are costs that we're covering for anybody who may need a tetanus vaccine as they go through that process. We also are working on, the vector control crews are doing extra shifts, making sure because we have such a lot of standing water throughout the entire county currently. So vector control is trying to do their best. They're doing day and night shifts to try to prevent mosquito development for the amount of standing water that we have. So we're doing spraying across the night, and then we do larvicidal preparedness sort of all day. And then we've been doing additional spraying around all of the places where the sandbagging happens because those tend to draw a lot of mosquitoes during those kinds of activities. So we don't want to make that activity any more difficult than it already is. So we've been spraying at the sandbagging locations as well. We have established a temporary animal shelter in the Kennedy Rec Center in South County at the request of Emergency Management. We've already received three pets this afternoon as families are starting to move out of that area to make sure that any pets that, for people that may need to be evacuated, are cared for in that space. So our animal control staff are also working those events as well and helping to recruit volunteers to make sure that any animals impacted by the flooding are taken care of in that space. Our environmental services group have been working on community education, particularly around flood cleanup. So that's a lot of waiting for people who may have flooding in their basement to make sure that they take proper precautions, carefully wash everything. St. Louis is an area where it's very easy to develop mold because of the wet, humid climate. So we provide people with a lot of information about how to make sure that they can halt the spread of growth if they do have water in their house as much as possible, and to help them protect themselves through really careful sort of hygiene practices. And then we work with commercial entities. If any commercial entities get flooded out, we work with them to see what they can do to make sure that they get back in regulatory compliance before they serve food or have other establishments that could be impacted by that. But we work really hand-in-hand with them in case any of them are impacted. So that group is very much on standby, providing communication out to those teams as much as possible to make sure that they're just aware and ready for any place that does in fact get impacted. So those are predominantly our issues. We're putting some public information out on our website. We also have put a press release together to help communicate the information, especially for average households, and how they protect themselves if they are flooded or if they have flooding in their area.
What is your website?
So it's stloesco.com and it's slash health, wellness.
Slash health?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Any questions?
Is there anything that we can help communicate, or is it just mostly if you have an issue, go to the website?
So especially for any residents that you may have, it's hard to overstate the importance of sort of the hygienic aspects of this. So wash hands very carefully. You never know what is sort of in the water that has been in the house. If you're working on cleanup efforts around your house, where that is to make sure that you're really carefully washing everything. Wash clothes separately. Wash toys completely separately. Wash all clothing, you know, frequently and often. The hygienic aspects can really help any person who's dealing with their own flood cleanup in their own home manage to prevent any spread of diseases or any spread of mold.
Spring, is that information on your website as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thanks for asking for an update. I'm here to provide the update for the Department of Transportation Public Works. We have been responding to flooding since mid-March. This has been a long-term event. I will talk mainly about the most recent crest predictions and how we've been addressing that in the last week. Thursday, May 30, we began the process of trying to save the intersection of Broadway and River City Casino Boulevard. That was at the request of several businesses along that corridor. We have been talking to the city about the South Broadway Bridge. That was determined that we could not save it because of the crest and concerns regarding the structural stability of the bridge during trying to keep the deck from, the water from coming through the deck, excuse me. Concrete does float actually if you displace enough water, so that's the concern that it would actually rise up off of the bridge piers. We've also, so during that process of sandbagging, the department has filled approximately 20,000 sandbags. The berm is in place along the road. We did close South Broadway today at 11:30 a.m. We've gotten the information out through MoDOT, through the City of St. Louis, and through the St. Louis County Twitter, and through our partners, the EOC. This afternoon, we did begin manning the EOC, and we'll man that until it steps down from its current condition. We provide citizens who request, or residents who require or request sandbagging, will provide them the supplies, typically piles of sand, truckloads of sand, or sandbags. Most of those, the bags are obtained through the Army Corps of Engineers, and the sand we usually get from the quarries. There is a shortage of sand in the St. Louis area, so we've been using millings, screenings, I'm sorry. They're the byproduct of when they crush stone, the fines, and they work just as well. But there is a shortage of sand in the St. Louis area because of the long flooding event. The department has approximately $2,600 hours of staff time into this current event at a cost of about $100,000. That is through today. As I said, we've ordered, or as I indicated, we've filled 20,000 sandbags. We've ordered 1,200 tons of sand, and the total cost from some other issues such as pumps and lights to man those sandbagging operations runs at about $150,000 currently. So, any questions?
Dan, I just want to say, as you know, I've been in touch with you throughout the weekend, and the performance of your department is exemplary. They have responded in great haste to every request that I've made, every request that citizens that reach your emergency command directly have made. So I cannot not just thank you enough, but acknowledge the exemplary work your department's done.
They've done an absolutely great job.
Fantastic.
And I'll be honest, they're a little weary at this point.
I bet.
We've been going at it for almost seven straight days at this point.
Yeah. Now, I just want, on the record, what a great job you guys have done.
Appreciate it.
I just want to amplify that. It's, you know, we come to take that grant, take it for granted, the service that your department delivers, whether it's a snowstorm or a flood, your responses are reliably outstanding. We're very proud to be a part of that. I know Mark Dietrich's here too, who was, we got to visit with earlier today, who was managing our emergency operations, and again, outstanding work all around.
Thank you. I will pass it on to him.
Thank you, Dan.
Mark, do you want to add anything?
Thanks. Spring and Dan did a good job of talking about a lot of the operations that are going on. I just wanted to take a moment and kind of walk you through the county and tell you exactly where the issues are. And as Dr. Page said in his remarks, I can't emphasize enough how important the buyout after the 1993 flood. I keep hearing over and over again, everybody I talk to, I keep hearing about 1993 and 1993 levels, and that's very factual, but it's not really 100% accurate what we're looking at here. We're not looking at the same flood. And the reason we're not looking at the same flood is because somewhere around 100 houses were bought out after 1993. So we've got an area up at Belle Fountain Neighbors, and as has been mentioned, we finished building a sandbag wall there today. There were about a dozen homes that had over 50% damage in 1993. Those have all been bought out. Now that's parkland. And if you go by there right now, it's full of water, and those would have been homes with families that were living in them at that time. So we didn't have that issue to deal with. That's, makes it much easier to approach this. And then down in South County in the LeMay area, we're somewhere around 90 homes that were bought out. And again, if you go down and look at LeMay Park tonight or tomorrow, you'll see a lot of water, and those were all homes in 1993. So we're not dealing with that. We have a relatively limited number of homes and businesses that we're dealing with that are affected by this. The biggest issues that we're dealing with, other than those few homes, is areas that have been cut off. There's an area down in LeMay where despite sandbagging efforts, it's, the streets are being cut off, and that was the initial reason why we opened the shelter at the Kennedy Complex. As was mentioned by Spring Schmidt, we have a pet shelter there with the human shelter. We always do that when we open. we always do that, when we open a shelter, we make sure we have a co-loaded, co-located pet shelter along with it. We do that for a couple of reasons. First and foremost is because of life safety, everything we do begins with life safety. And the reason I say it's life safety is you would be, well, maybe you wouldn't be surprised to find out the number of people who, when threatened by disaster, will not leave their homes if they can't take their pet. So we want to make sure that we give them the opportunity to take that pet, and we co-locate it so that the pet shelter is right outside, so in the morning you can get out, you can spend time with your pet, you can walk your dog, play with your cat, whatever it might be. That also helps people who are affected by a disaster, it brings a little normalcy to their life, so that, that's very important. As I said, we, we began that shelter because of that area there along River City Boulevard, and then today, we had an issue where some apartments right off River de Pere in the African area, the Cedar Creek Apartments, they, the buildings themselves are not flooded, but the entrance is, is a low spot, and that has flooded, there is a danger of a couple of the buildings taking on water here in the next couple of days, so we had police officers go door to door to that apartment complex today, let everyone know, first of all, what the issue was, and secondly, that we have the shelter available to them. We have some issues in the city of Fenton, where the Merrimack is backed up, all of our flooding is because of the Mississippi, and then backing up in the River de Pere, the areas I was just talking about, and backing up a little bit into the Merrimack. The only area that's been affected by that is Fenton, it's relatively low scale, again, I'm not discounting anyone who's affected by this, because I understand if it's your home or your business, it's, it's a true emergency, but in the overall spectrum of things, it's relatively small. It's also in an area where it, it happens relative, almost every year, so people know that it's happening, and they know how to take those precautions, and they're handling it in the Fenton area in stride and, and taking care of things. We move up into North County, into Bell Fountain Neighbors, as I mentioned, and that's the other area that we have been concerned with and watching. And then finally, I'll wrap up by saying we have storms coming through tonight, my staff is at the EOC right now, monitoring those storms, so we have a concern, not only of the additional water, but there is the threat of some severe weather coming through, which I hope won't happen, but we're certainly keeping an eye on that. We have rain coming through all this week, the projections right now is that the Mississippi River is going to crest at 46 feet on Thursday afternoon, around 3 o'clock, and that's everything that we have done, all the precautions have been to stay on top of that level, and I think we're in, we're in real good shape. Any questions?
Mark? Mark, the, if we crest on Thursday, what's the downtime, or what's the?
How long until it?
How long until you get a cleanup, and how long will the EOC stay open, and what do you anticipate?
Yeah, we will, right now, it's looking like it's going to take four to five days from the crest to get back where we are now, and then when we get there, it drops off relatively quickly, so within a week, roughly, we should be able to start with cleanup and recovery. We will continue emergency operations in the EOC, running that, as long as the recovery takes, which is really difficult to, to say right now, I would guess a couple of weeks, but that's just going to depend on what, what we see when the water goes down.
Do you have all the resources you need to manage this?
Right now, with what we have in, in place, we're in good shape, if that changes, I'll certainly let you know.
Okay, thank you. What else? Dan, anything? Mark, I just want to say again, thank you for the diligence and the incredible job you guys have done. Councilman Harder and I had an opportunity today to fly by helicopter over the flooding, and the one area you mentioned with respect to homes that are cut off, it, it's amazing to see how you've saved those homes on short notice. Granted, they're cut off, but at the end of the day, they're not under floodwaters, and that's all the result of your efforts, your, your team's efforts, I appreciate it greatly.
Well, thank you, and Transportation, Public Works did a great job, the volunteers, everybody went out, and we just put the plan in place and they executed.
We're, St. Louis County is lucky to have Department of Transportation at the level it is.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I agree. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Report to special committees?
Please hold on the order of business.
Under the public forum this evening, Mr. Presiding Officer, we have 15 speakers.
Okay, when you are called, please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
First speaker this evening is Alex Lee.
Good evening, Council, my name is Alex Lee, my work address is 1260 Andes Boulevard, do you want my home address as well, or? Okay, well, again, my name is Alex Lee, I am a lifelong proud St. Louis County resident and Blues fan, and I am also the Executive Vice President and General Counsel for TKC Holdings, St. Louis company with a long history in St. Louis. We were founded by Jack Taylor, the founder of Enterprise, our former CEOs include Doug Albrecht and Jim Feese, both Chairs of the St. Louis Regional Business Council. With me this evening is our Vice President of Sales for IC Solutions, which is our phone company, Mike Kennedy. Our President, Tim McAtier, unfortunately could not make it this evening, he really wanted to be here, however, he is celebrating his 25th wedding anniversary, and he told me that he would like to make it to his 26th, so was not able to make it this evening. The reason that Mike and I are here this evening is actually because of item number 22 in the Communications section, it's the approval of Securus Technologies as the new phone provider for the St. Louis County Justice System. IC Solutions may or may not be aware, has been the phone service provider since 2007, and I wanted you all to be aware and get an opportunity, perhaps in the future, near future in fact, to meet with you all, to educate you really on both our bid, which we believe is superior to Securus', and then also point out the, the very important fact that TKC Holdings, IC Solutions, we are St. Louis-based company, and Securus Technologies, on the other hand, is a Dallas-based company. We, TKC Holdings, have been around for 40, nearly 45 years, we've given back to the community, we're a very, very vital part of the business community and St. Louis community overall, we have overall about 830 jobs that we provide to the St. Louis community, so we just want you guys all to be aware of the impact that this potential switch would make, and again, we truly believe we have a superior bid to Securus', we haven't had a chance, unfortunately, to directly communicate and present to the procurement board, or to the folks who are making the decision to make the switch to Securus', and we're, we're hoping for an opportunity to do that in whatever setting is most convenient, both to the Council, to the procurement board, and, and whatnot. So, again, really appreciate the opportunity to speak this evening, appreciate the Council's time, I'm happy to take any questions regarding either our bid, Securus' bid, or the background of our company.
Do you want to have any questions? Thank you, Mr. Lee.
Thanks so much.
Next speaker is Azora Leggins.
Good evening, Azora Leggins, 5320 Bermuda Road. I'm here today, again, Chairman Tranquus and County Executive Page. Page is a doctor, Tranquus is a lawyer, I suffer from PTSD, and I have some serious legal problems that I have not been able to get resolved. I've asked this council to possibly read up on some of my medical history, or PTSD and depression, and know what it would take when people are constantly harassing you, when I'm calling for the police to help me, and nobody is addressing my issues. And I've been before this council now on this particular issue for a year. I've been to the prosecuting attorney's office, I've done the right thing, and that's all that I can do. I'm reaching out to this county to give me some protection, give me some help, or at a minimum, give me some guidance, because right now, this is where I have to come, there's nowhere else for me to go, and this is where my protection is. And if it's not here, then maybe one of you can tell me where I need to be, because I've been everywhere.
Ms. Leggins, I want to thank you for your communication that you sent by electronic mail, I want you to know that I read it completely, and I wish I could tell you that this body had jurisdiction to help you, but I do not believe it does. I think the, the best course you have is to seek legal advice and legal counsel with respect to the information contained in your communication, but I don't know that the council is in a situation where it has authority or jurisdiction to really aid you in, in what it is you're trying to obtain.
Well, what I'm trying to obtain is protection, and I would think that this county could provide me with that, if somebody is stealing my money, that's when you call the police, if somebody's committing perjury, that's when you call the police. I've taken the appropriate steps, but for some reason, perjury for an African-American woman doesn't rise to a criminal level, and I'm disturbed by that. And I sat here and I listened to you and Mr. Page, nobody has talked about how you're going to bridge the racial divide here in St. Louis County, that's not even being discussed anymore. And we've been talking about that for the last couple of years, but yet, it wasn't even mentioned tonight by Executive Page, nor you, you know, so what do we do? I don't know what else to do, and I'm not a violent person, but people keep pressuring you. I got a man calling me from Chicago telling me he can do what he wants to do to me. How am I supposed to respond to that, Mr. Tranquus? Help me understand what's going on here.
Ms. Leggins, like I told you, based on what you submitted and my reading of it, I think that the most expedient course for you is to retain private legal counsel and have them assess the civil aspects of the, of the issues that you raised in that communication. I don't know that this body has any jurisdiction to affect what you want. What I saw were, were civil claims for any number of employment-related problems or discrimination, but as far as criminal action, this, this body has no jurisdiction over that.
But you can't make a recommendation to the prosecuting attorney's office?
That isn't our province, I mean, that's, you've been to him, and he's, he has to make his good faith determination based on the information that's presented to him. I assume Mr. Bell has done that, but you certainly could continue to pursue that, but I just don't know that you coming here to this body is, is going to get you what you want from this body, I don't know that we have the authority to act in the way you'd like us to act.
But you do have oversight, if you wanted to administer your oversight through your Justice and Health Committees, you could go and put some, you could put some eyes on the prosecuting attorney's office, you could find out why perjury is not being looked at as a criminal charge, you could find out why them stealing my money is not being looked at as a criminal charge, they just arrested a man, and, because he has stole $40,000, so, what, if they steal from me, it's okay? I don't understand.
I'm not suggesting that, I just, I, I don't know what else to tell you other than what I've told you tonight.
You know, well, well, I think that you should have a conscience, and y'all should do the right thing, somebody has to tell these people what to do, we pay them to infringe upon our rights and our benefits. You know, I don't know what else to tell you either, sir, but what happens when it go bad, I'm under doctor's care, I'm tired of these people stealing my money, and I can't call the police? And then you tell me it's nothing that you can do? And the county executive, before Mr. Stinger left, he was making a good faith effort to make some calls. Executive Page, can you do that?
I'm familiar with your case, Azora, I've looked at it a few times.
I asked you, could you do something from the county executive seat, now, not from the, the chairman of the council?
No, I'm, I'm familiar with your case, and I don't think that we have the jurisdiction to change what happened, or help you moving forward with this issue.
Okay, so this is how African-Americans are treated, because I can't believe that anybody else, everybody else that goes over to the prosecuting attorney's office can get charges filed, every charge should be taken serious, so I can't understand why mine is not being taken serious. And, and I mean, my life is important too, just like yours, and yours, and everybody else is up there, how would you feel if somebody was taking all of your money? You'd have an issue with that, wouldn't you?
I'm sorry, Azora, I'm, I'm familiar with your problem, and I wish we could be helpful.
You can be helpful, all you have to do is call over to the prosecuting attorney's office and have them thoroughly investigate.
Thank you, ma'am, thanks.
Next speaker is Natasha Tru.
Hello, Council, I'm Natasha Tru, I live in Hazen. I'm coming today because some of your investigations have been concluded, and at this time, I feel like the government has failed us, because no charges was brought against the people at your jail. I'm trying to figure out why that the council haven't did something before the three deaths, it's not like you didn't know that was going on, because people have said that, it was said to you all, and nobody's done anything, and now you tell me that he, we can't get charges because you can't get one individual, because everybody was over there breaking the rules. So since everybody broke the rules, that means that nobody could be held accountable, so I don't see why nobody's being held accountable, but I don't understand, if a guard brought drugs in there, which they do all the time, they get locked up, if they have sex with the inmates, which they do all the time, they get locked up, but when they kill an inmate, they get a pat on the back, I don't understand. Everybody's still got their jobs to sell for one person, it's nurses over there pleading the fit, when you plead the fit, you don't want to incriminate yourself, so what did you do wrong that you're pleading the fit? But nobody's investigating that, what are y'all doing sitting up here, because we know they're not doing nothing? And I'm a firm believer, the government is never going to do nothing to the government, but I kind of thought y'all was going to be a little bit different, but you got committees that nobody's on, we, the people ain't representing on no community, yeah, y'all sit there as our representatives, but y'all are not our representatives, because nobody's in them committees that's from our neighborhoods, that's from where we're coming from. Y'all don't understand none of the struggles, so why ain't the committees filled with us? With people that can oversight, look and see what's going on, and try to stop it? Everybody got a political agenda sitting on them committees, they don't even show up, they just collecting checks if they getting paid, collecting, wasting time. My nephew didn't get justice, Shaw didn't get justice, Reeves didn't get justice, nobody's going to get justice, because everybody over there is getting a pat on the back for death, but you go to jail for drugs and sex, it's confusing. So council, tell me, Mr. Page, what are you going to do? Because we need some answers, and we definitely need some charges, because it was very wrong what they did at that jail.
Well, I can't help you with the charges, that's a decision to be made by the prosecuting attorney, but we are, we are going to be making some changes, there already have been some changes in the Justice Services, and I think I'll be able to provide you with a little bit more detail, once the accreditation survey is done, and I expect to have that report within the week.
Okay, and your top execs that's still there, why is she still sitting in the seat over policies when she couldn't follow one, and couldn't have her people up under her following one? Why is she still there?
We have a new person in charge of Justice Services.
Well, Lieutenant Doyle is there temporarily, but Julia Childress is still over policies and procedures.
Yeah, but we'll have a better answer for you after the accreditation is done, and we can summarize all the changes that have been made, and all the changes we hope to make moving forward.
Okay, my time is up, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next speaker is Angie Zorich.
Hello, Angie Zorich, Oakville, Missouri, and St., unincorporated, St. Louis County. I mean, I'm just going to reiterate what she said, I know you guys don't have any control over the, any, nobody being charged, and I think that maybe at some point, maybe somebody will be charged, I don't know, I, I don't, I don't think it's likely, and I, but I think the more likely thing, and the thing that you can control, especially you, Executive Page, is the advisory board at the jail. Do I understand correctly that that is your, you are the person who appoints them? Okay, so, and I- So, and I did fill out an application to meet with you through CAT, your scheduling. I haven't heard anything back, but I think it's really important. And I agree with her. I think, you know, like the police board of, I don't even know who the advisory board people are. I don't know what their backgrounds are. But I'm guessing it's similar to the police board of commissioners, where we have retired FBI agents and the old chief of police's wife or widow. People like that. I agree with her. There's a lot of people that have, you know, political aspirations. I don't. I mean, I have five kids. I have grandkids. I have a full-time job. I have a family that I care about, and I care about this county and how police conduct themselves and how people that work in the jail conduct themselves. Again, you know, a woman was thrown off of a parking garage this weekend, and she just happened to be a corrections officer. And her husband, who threw her off, was also a corrections officer. I don't know how to fix this problem, but I would suspect that we need to start with the hiring. Like, let's find people who might better fit the profile of that authority instead of people who might be murderers or likely murderers. You know, it's not getting any better yet. And I understand that you are new to your position, but those boards have been empty-seated for a while. And I think it, I'm just asking you to make that a priority. One more thing. Securus and IT solutions. I know that in the jail, if you want to talk to somebody, you have to pay a whole lot of money on your debit card just to talk to somebody. So when someone goes into the jail, if it was my son, then I would have to mani up about 40 bucks, and that would give me a very limited amount of time to talk to them. So when you're looking at these contracts, I think you ought to look at, I mean, you guys have phone service at the jail, don't you? Can't you throw, hook up a few phones and let people call their families? Why are we paying such a high price to talk to people who are in our city? They're not in Alaska. They're not in Japan. Why does it cost so much to talk to people who are incarcerated? Thanks.
Next speaker is Tashonda Trup.
Good afternoon, Council. My name is Tashonda Trup, and I live in Pine Line. As you all know, the police have, the Clayton Police have concluded their investigation, and the prosecutor's office decided that no charges are to be filed. I disagree, and not because it was my child, but because of what I read in the report. Have you all read the report? Any of you? If any of you need a copy, I will give you a copy if you need it. Okay. What I read in the report screened charges. Some of your staff at the Justice Center is an embarrassment to this county. In the Clayton investigative report, what angered me the most was the guards stated in their statement that certain policies and procedures weren't common practices and they weren't enforced. Nurses who wasn't trained for positions that they were in, you have nurses refusing to cooperate with the investigation and a death and refusing to talk to Wesley Bear. In this report, you have a statement from a lieutenant that states he told said nurse to put Lamar on the clinic list, and said nurse told the lieutenant that he did so. But there was no record of him doing it. After thinking about it, I came to the conclusion that they learn poor behavior and poor practices from poor leadership. Starting with Steve Stinger, who hired Julia Childress, who is now back over the same policies and procedures that she allowed them to throw at the wayside. She proved she proved to us by allowing Juan Morales to continue to be employed after reports of abuse. She also showed us that she doesn't have to follow policies and procedures because she did not report the abuse and did not follow proper procedures to have Mr. Morales terminated. But yet, and still, she still has her job with this county. Ms. Childress, still being an employee of this county, says to me that breaking policies and procedures don't matter, and the worst that can happen is that you get demoted. So before I step away from this podium, my question to you, Mr. Page, is why is Julia still employed by this county? And why is she over policies that she clearly don't enforce? I really would like to talk to you more about your tweet of the list of actions in the recent weeks. I also have questions about the committee investigation into the jail's deaths. When is the next meeting? Is there any progress? Why can't the committee subpoena the nurse to cooperate? Because it's already hard to deal with losing your child this way. Then to have someone who can tell you about your child's last days but refuse to do so is another level of hurt and anger. Makes you wonder, what is he hiding? I'm tired of wondering. I want answers, and I want results. And that's why I come to my government every week to seek help. Together, we will make the Justice Center better.
Thank you, Ms. Trup. Thank you.
Oh, real quick. I did ask my assistant to have another meeting to follow up with what's been going on. Two more meetings. I don't know if he set them or not. Probably not. So, just so you know, I did, I do want to continue the conversations and, you know, see what we can do to make some changes. We had, of course, we had the holiday recess and things like that came up. But I want to get back on track and start meeting with you again.
Okay. I appreciate that.
Next speaker is Shelley Burris.
Hello, Council. My name is Shelley Burris, and I live in Oakville. That's 63129, unincorporated. And I came to make a few comments about the voucher amendment issue that I've learned a bit about. But what I'd like to tell you is I've been a resident of St. Louis County since 1972, and I've moved several times and have been a resident of District 6 for 45 years. My children have been educated in the public school in District 6. I'm very happy with services that I've received over the years. The road, county roads and maintenance are fine. When I call, I call when I see a problem and very responsive. Police and fire have been very professional, prompt. I thank you for the few times I've come in to make comments about a few issues to the council. Now, my concern today is that I want the council to examine the current status of unincorporated South and other unincorporated areas in St. Louis County specifically related to apartments and rental home availability and the proposal of additional ordinances that would place restrictions on owners and landlords. Today, I want to share a portion of the information I gathered. It's just a portion, but I made a little pin map. And what this shows is, it shows about a third, from the best I can tell, of apartment complexes within District 6. And I have approximately 31 pins here. So I'll just give you a little more background. These complexes that I have identified are in zip codes 63123, 63125, 63126, 63128, 63129. Now, there is a range of total units for each of the apartment complexes, ranging from the smallest of maybe 32 units up to, some complexes have as much as 426 units. The 30 complexes have a total of 6,282 units. So you can imagine, if this is a third, be about a third, at least about a third, again, two-thirds more. Now, please know this is a small portion, as I've described, totally of District 6. It appears to be about one-third. Also, the scale, this is a map done in 2014. So you're going to see some, the unincorporated area is white, with the munis being the colored areas. Few blank areas, but since this is a 2014 map, it does not include the approximately, let's see, I think it was 14 new streets that have been put in since during the years of 2016 to 2019. There isn't too much more building area available in South County. Okay. Also, as I, the pins are just the colors I used. I could have used white, but they weren't going to show up very well. So what I did want to show you is...
Just three minutes, Mr. Page.
Go ahead, ma'am. Just try to be as succinct as possible.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
There are clusters of these apartment complexes. For instance, this one of a total of seven pins. I could give you the complex names, but it came to 1,397 units within an area of just slightly over a square mile. So when you drive by them, they look reasonably good. There's been good care of the properties. So what else did I want to say? In summary, our area has many different types of housing that has been occupied for more than four decades. And please, let's not put additional burdens on our rental property owners. Thank you.
Next speaker is Celeste Whitzel.
Celeste Whitzel, 3116 South Ridge. Regarding 5th District County Councilwoman Lisa Clancy's proposed bill to force private property owners to accept housing vouchers as opposed to accepting vouchers under the current federal and Missouri policies, her bill would affect only unincorporated St. Louis County, primarily the 4th and 6th districts. Those districts already have significant, some might say disproportionate, numbers of rental property. And these property owners accept vouchers under the federal and Missouri policies. What Ms. Clancy wants to accomplish is already addressed by the Federal Fair Housing Act and the Missouri Human Rights Act. Under her bill, the rest of the 88 municipalities in St. Louis County will be immune to her force plan. As such, there's seemingly a clear and distinct imbalance in the application of this bill. As it stands, the rest of St. Louis County and its various 88 municipalities, including Ladue, Town and Country, Brenwood, Wildwood, Frontenac, Chesterfield, DePere, Bridgeton, Clayton, Maplewood, Webster Groves, Kirkwood, Creve Corfenton, U-City, Maryland Heights, Glendale, Sunset Hills, Richmond Heights, Crestwood, et cetera, will not be affected. And Ms. Clancy will not even be affected by her own bill since her community, Maplewood, is a municipality. It therefore seems incongruent to demand that those citizens living in unincorporated St. Louis County be mandated to do something which several other council members will not be living in because they live in municipalities and which the rest of the 88 municipalities will not be affected as well. The council should work first with these 88 municipalities to pass such a bill before targeting only unincorporated St. Louis County. We all want to live in safety and security for our families. But as it stands, her bill seemingly would not be affected, she would not be affected by her own bill. It is therefore surprising for this council to write bills only affecting unincorporated St. Louis County. Indeed, the whole county needs to be part of such forced legislation and not just the residents in the unincorporated part. Unincorporated St. Louis County is tired of being dumped on by this council over many years. To bypass the rest of the county with this type of legislation is hypocritical of this council and of their intentions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Frank Ziegler Jr.
My name is Frank Ziegler Jr. Address 2111 Telegraph Road, 63125. I'm here to speak in support of the Bywater Development Proposal for Affordable Senior Housing at 2845 Telegraph Road. I've been a resident of South County. I moved one time, five houses up the street. So I've lived for over 53 years in the same community. Spent my entire working career at LeMay Bank and Trust Company. Changed the name to Midwest Bank Center 2000. And listening to all the speaking about the flooding brought back a lot of bad memories because I was at the bank in 1993 when it went underwater. The gentleman talked about buying out the houses, and I'll just divert for a moment. In 1973, we also saw the flood come up onto the parking lot of the bank. The houses were not removed. In 1993, when it came up onto LeMay, all the way up to the animal hospital, the houses were removed, and it's been a real benefit. I guess the main reason I wanted to be here is because this document that I have in my hand, the LeMay Comprehensive Plan, was put together, was committed to, authorized, and paid for by St. Louis County. I have a letter here that's addressed to me dated in 2006. The St. Louis County, I quote, "The St. Louis County Department of Planning is pleased to release the LeMay Comprehensive Plan. In March 2006, St. Louis County Council approved the plan and amended the general plan of St. Louis County to incorporate the LeMay Comprehensive Plan. By building off of the past plans and studies, including the existing conditions report and LeMay market assessment, and by utilizing the community's input, the LeMay Comprehensive Plan serves as a guide for future development in LeMay as well as provides recommendation for future land use." The property that's in question here actually lies about, I was born and raised in the city, so I talk city blocks. It was about, it's about city block, about three city blocks south of what this LeMay Comprehensive Plan. But it's close enough to still be very important. Through my career and because I've resided over 53 years, because I've worked at LeMay Bank and Trust for over 46 years, I was always interested in what was going to happen, the economic development of that near South County area. In 19, I can't remember the exact year, but I was involved in the formation, one of the originators in the formation of the LeMay Development Corporation, which is still in place today and is there to make sure that there's economic development in the near South County area. The, in going back and reviewing this document that I have here, in the observations, if you'll excuse me just a minute, I'll find it. In the observations, it says, "Besides the lack of availability of larger homes, LeMay is limited in other housing options, such as townhomes, duplexes, villas, and senior living development." That's an observation. When you get back to the recommendations, the actual recommendations of the document state, there's four recommendations.
Mr. Ziegler, I need you to wrap up, if you don't mind.
All right. I have just two recommendations I would refer to. One recommendation is that it says to encourage the construction of senior living developments located in areas close to public transportation and community amenities. And then the last recommendation is develop programs to assist low and moderate income home buyers. The LeMay Development Corporation tried to do this at the corner of LeMay Ferry and Bayless, but was unsuccessful in acquiring the necessary tax credits from the state to make it financially viable. Bywater Development thankfully has those credits in hand, and they are available to them, and it would be an absolute waste to not see this project go through and have those credits utilized. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Next speaker is Peter Burgess.
Good evening, Council. My name is Peter Burgess, 755 Ridcliffe Avenue, U-City. I come to address the council tonight concerning tax increment financing projects and specifically the Olive I-170 TIF project. In August of last year, the U-City TIF Commission, on which the county names six of the 12 appointees, the commission approved the use of up to $70.5 million in tax increment financing subsidies for a proposed redevelopment project in U-City. That's all well and good. But the proposed development presented to the TIF Commission massively overstated the amount of incremental revenues which U-City would receive from the project. The city's team assumed it would be able to keep all of the so-called bottom-half revenues, when the reality was that it would receive only a tenth of what was collected because it's a participant in the county's sales tax pool. The city included the 90-plus percent of pooled revenues to which it had no right, an amount which averages over $1 million per year over each of the 23-year TIF. And it relied on them to fund its promised $15 million in improvements in the Third Ward and on the Olive Boulevard Business Corridor. These public benefits were touted by the city in its presentation to the TIF council. As far as I know, neither your council, the TIF commission, nor any other county body approved an action at the time which allowed the city to keep these revenues. So as far as anyone on the TIF commission was concerned... So as far as anyone on the TIF commission was concerned back in August, there was no downside to having these much-needed improvements be completed within the city. It was assumed it would all be funded from the revenues the city was entitled to, and the pool was not being deprived any money. So this revenue stream was assumed to be going to two places simultaneously. Although the city isn't acknowledging this yet, less than half the amount of improvements, um, uh, are, no, I'm sorry, it's expected tax increment from the novice redevelopment will fund less than half of the amount of the improvements originally promised. The likelihood of ultimately receiving these revenues is lower despite spreading them over a much longer time, and it's including a tax increment generated outside the project area, um, the one that's being subsidized, to make up the difference. Um, what was promised as part of the original approval is not in the amended agreement. For these reasons, I think it's appropriate that the TIF commission, um, consider the amended redevelopment agreement before U-City considers final approval, and that future TIF requests, um, be, uh, approved on a, uh, conditional basis so that it allows reconsideration if, um, contracts change. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next speaker is Art, I think it's Schmerman, Sherman?
Sherman.
Mr. Presiding Officer, could we ask the speaker to please spell his last name?
Pardon?
Can you spell your last name?
Thank you, sir.
Kraut names need all the alphabet, even if they sound like Sherman.
Mine was Schmedeke.
I'm going to begin by, um, telling you that I have spent 30 years working for the Air National Guard at Jefferson Barracks, that I'm president of Jefferson Barracks Community Council. Obviously, I've been retired for a while, thankfully. And I want to talk about the development at 2845 Telegraph Road, the Sylvan Springs Senior Apartments. I, talking about it in particular because it meets not only what Frank Ziegler was talking about, a need for affordable housing, but it reserves housing for military people in need of affordable housing. It restricts the occupants to being 62 years or older. It does not permit children. It is not HUD housing and subject to that particular batch of somewhat oppressive federal laws. My comment. But however, I do see a real honest need for that. I am president of the community council at Jefferson Barracks. We formed in 2007. I helped form it with the base commander because the Air Force wanted to close out the Air National Guard at Jefferson Barracks, and oh, by the way, I worked for them. I really didn't want to see that happen. And we managed to keep the Air National Guard, to grow it. We managed to keep the Army National Guard, Guard for Missouri and grow it. But we have a large group of people who come to the community council meetings, who belong to things like the M-Vets and the Vietnam Vets and the American Legion, including myself, who recognize that as they get to their elder years, sometimes they need affordable housing that is in the form of things like apartments, where you don't mow the lawn and you can have a reasonable price for a place to live, especially if you wind up by yourself. So I strongly, strongly encourage the adoption of this particular proposal by Sylvan Springs, for Sylvan Springs Senior Apartments. I will also tell you, I spent 20 years working in engineering, and I have thoroughly explored this document regarding this kind of development. This is the approval from planning and zoning for this particular project. The engineering in it is excellent. As far as I can tell, it's flawless, and I used to have to deal with how we could spend federal money and make something work without going over budget, and other issues like how many parking places do we need for the offices we're putting in the building? All of that requires a good knowledge of engineering. The engineering I see that St. Louis County Planning looked at, and their evaluation of it, I think, is flawless. And that really will summarize my comments. If you would like a copy of the letter I sent to you, sir.
I'll take that, sir.
I will give it to you.
Thank you, Mr. Sherman.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Rena Abston.
Good evening, County Council, Rena Abston, Rauler Renters Association. And so this evening, there's been a lot of talk about floods. And I remember working at the Corps of Engineers at the flood of 93, and I remember taking the pedometer readings. I remember going to the levees. I remember going to, uh, the banks and seeing people's stuff flowing down the rivers. I remember all that, and it is truly tragic. I am, uh, in awe of all the resources that has been used, which they should be, that people are in flooded times. My perplexed, I'm perplexed, however, that tenants are in flooded apartments all over, flooded houses all over with mold, with issues that they can't get out of. And so even just here in the health department of how many resources that they, uh, put out there for these homeowners, but when a tenant went, they had a mold issue in their apartment, all they got was a report. Um, they couldn't get a health inspector to go to the court hearing. They couldn't get a follow-up. They couldn't get anything but a report that said that their air quality was horrible. When people call different entities, they don't get anything. They don't get any services. They don't get any help as tenants. And so it just blows my mind that these are all people suffering one way or another. But property owners, business owners, it seems like any type of natural disaster, y'all on it, which I'm not denying that, but where is all the relief and legislation for tenants? I mean, it's not like we don't know these people are not living in molded properties. It's not like we don't know these people are going through these floods of evictions, floods of homelessness. I mean, we do remember that people were thrown out during the holidays, 500 families just thrown out, flooded out in the streets of homelessness, and nothing has been done. And so if I ask the county council one question, do you know in the state of Missouri who can lawfully terminate a lease? Two, two entities. Would you know the name? Would you, would you know who those two entities are? Any of you? Hmm. See, that's the basic thing that you would need to know as far as how to advocate for a tenant. So I could tell you, a building inspector is not one of them. A building inspector can't terminate a lease, written or oral, but they were flooded out into the street. Nothing ever happened. And so, Mr. Sam Page, I believe you're over Creve Court. So when I brought Ms. Bissel, who was flooded out into the streets through eviction, she had her blood drawn and was treated horribly in Creve Court. Nothing ever happened. And so my question is, when it's a tenant going through these things, when is the relief going to come and flood in for us like they do homeowners out there? Because people are people, and they're suffering.
That's three minutes, Mr. President.
So I'll just throw that out there.
If you, if you have some specific examples of someone who needs help, we'd just like to know about it. Either call my office or call the emergency management shelter. We'd like to know about it.
Yes.
With this, with this flood.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next speaker is Paul Hartman.
I grew up in Oakville, um, living in Soulard right now. I, uh, recently heard Wesley Bell saying, um, that there's not going to be any criminal charges against Johnny Shy. Um, I wanted to say that Oakville is not happy about that, um, and nor anyone with a soul. Now, I'm not saying this council nor Wesley Bell is happy either. Um, he's basing his decision on his understanding of the matter. He said it's impossible to narrow it down, uh, with so many hands involved. And of course, he is right. Um, I've been saying this for a while. This issue is widespread. It's not a couple of bad apples here and there. Um, there's a lot of guilty individuals, and chokeholds like this can be hard to get out of. It's unfortunate that Wesley Bell sees no other option but to tap out, but there has to be some kind of way through this council's connection to the county jail and the investigators who care, assuming there are any, um, to loosen that chokehold on Wesley Bell so he can have reason to change his mind and serve justice to his full potential.
Thank you, Mr. Hart.
Next speaker is Courtney Burnell.
Burnell?
Yes.
The next speaker is Pat Washington.
My name is Pat Washington. I am at 740 Plymouth in University City's Third Ward, and I came tonight because I want to share some of my continued concerns about the Olive TIF, uh, development. Uh, for the past year, I have been among a group of people who have been working tirelessly to try to get a community benefits agreement on this project to give residents, uh, more of a voice in terms of how this TIF is constructed and the benefits that would come to the community. Unfortunately, um, a lot of, um, posturing, um, has happened on our council, and we were not able to, um, fully, um, present our case to the public and to the, uh, University City County Council in, in enough time, um, to, um, have a meaningful discussion about a community benefits agreement, which is unfortunate. So I want to applaud you all first for trying to root out corruption and root out, um, things that impede transparency in county government. And, and I would hope that some of your colleagues in University City on the council would learn from your efforts and try to do the same in University City. So I'm going to read from a prepared statement, and then I want to just share something with you. Um, some of the concerns in University City, uh, is that, uh, the city engaged the services of financial analyst Jonathan Ferry to review certain aspects of the project. The scope of Ferry's work was not, um, publicly, um, shared. Uh, as you may be aware, six of the 12 members of the TIF commission were appointed by then, uh, county executive Stinger, which in my view is enough right there to send the whole project back to the starting point. His appointment of those people and his insistence that this deal move forward makes me believe that maybe there is something else, something more nefarious regarding this project in, in, in University City, and maybe some more shoes will drop a little bit later on. But the fourth, um, the part of the TIF commission hearing was held on August 23rd, 2018. The TIF commission voted 10 to, uh, 10 to 2, uh, to recommend the project to the University City Council. Both of the nay votes were cast by members appointed by, uh, St. Louis County. Ryan Danielson of The Patch wrote about the hearing in, on August 24th, and this is a direct quote from the article. He said that, that TIF commission member Glenn Powers, who also served as chief, chief of staff to St. Louis County Executive Steve Stinger, told The Patch he would have liked to have seen Ferry's analysis, but the city did not provide it. Powers said that he voted no because he believed the TIF was too rich for the developer. So do I. It is not clear if the U-City TIF commission is still active or the status of its membership, given that at least two of the members appointed by Stinger no longer work for the county. I find it interesting that following the third TIF commission meeting inside five weeks, the fourth part of the hearing was deferred by two months until after the August, until after August 23rd.
That's three minutes, Mr. President.
I heard that the delay was at the request of one or more elected officials who may have felt their prospects for winning the August primary could be hampered if the TIF vote had, um, been held up. So there are so many issues about this TIF project that just really don't pass the sniff test. And so I would urge you, um, as members of this council and to you, County Executive Page, to do two things. One, um, talk to the St. Louis County members of the TIF commission, understand really what their concerns were. Two, take a look at TIF reform from an equity lens as you build, um, your diversity and inclusion department in St. Louis County. TIF reform, TIF reform has to be a priority to prevent situations like University City. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Washington. Thanks.
Final speaker this evening is Arnie Dino.
Thank you very much, members of the county council. My name is Arnie C. A.C. Dino, public advocate, P.O. Box 1535, O'Fallon, Missouri 63366, and my phone number is 314-440-9000. What brought me here for the council about a year ago was the treatment of, uh, people in your corrections department. And I'm saddened and astonished by the announcement of the county prosecutor not bringing charges in the loss of life of three prisoners while in your custody since January of this year. It's sad to me that this continues to go on, but yet there's not answers to these families, and there's not answers to the region. It's intolerable and unexcusable. This county council should be delving in more, asking more questions, allowing transparency, allowing professional responsibility, and I pray to God that Lieutenant Doyle, uh, Lieutenant, um, Doyle will be the answer and the sound to that because Julia Childress dropped the ball from day one as being appointed by County Executive Steve Stinger, former County Executive Steve Stinger. It's about now, since the county prosecutor says he's not going to prosecute anybody in these loss of three lives, which I would think that each one of you who have children would take it sincerely and deeply within your own heart. I'd like to see the county make public the police reports by the county police department, police reports by the Division of Internal Affairs and professional responsibility. The corrections reports should be made public, and finally, the prosecutor's decision of why and how he came to the decision of not bringing any charges in this case. There needs to be a call by this county council for transparency because we will be here, meeting after meeting, demanding answers and accountability. I applaud the efforts of County Executive Page to establish and put in place $2.7 million for the purchase of police body cameras. These cameras are needed now and were actually needed months ago. It's to protect citizens and the public. It's to allow for safety and to allow and tell the true facts, to ensure accountability and professionalism of all police personnel, to ensure standards of operating procedures and being 100% followed. Those standard operating procedures are known as SOPs. Money should come from the half-cent sales tax. I ask that you also, County Executive Page, incorporate body cams into the Corrections Justice Services Department. There are many questions of how human beings are being treated or wrongly treated, and the SOPs or standard operating procedures are being violated. Equities and pay for women in employment in county government. Past pay from previous jobs should not matter. The job responsibilities of the job should matter, and that's how you should pay a person. It should not matter anybody's sex or gender. It should not ma, it should matter what their education and experience is.
That's three minutes, Mr. President.
Uh, I'll just sum up. My, my third point is, uh, the point of telephones in the corrections facility. It's a bad contract and it's a rip-off. It's a, this current contract is a scam for political allies, and County Executive Page said that he would put a stop to this. Now, I don't know about this Texas, uh, contract, but the cost of phones is outrageous, and it's preying on the poor who can't afford bail in our county jail. The phone service provider in the corrections facility, um, needs to be looked at, and changes need to be made before it's approved by this county council. It's gauging and overcharging, taking advantage of the poor. It's outrageous and ludicrous charges to make a company wealthy. Now, I think a normal phone call should be maybe 10 cents, 20 cents with today's unlimited, uh, phone calls.
So then I'm going to need you to wrap up, please.
Yes, but I cautioned you and asked you to look at this contract very deeply and very seriously. Thank you.
No more speakers, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Introduction, Bill.
Bill number 139, introduced by Councilmember Trakus, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a grant of up to $125,000 from the Annie E. Casey Foundation, appropriating the same for support of the Juvenile Detention Alternatives Initiative Program of the Family Court, and authorizing the county executive. of the Family Court, and authorizing the county executive to execute necessary documents. Bill number 140, introduced by Councilmember Tracus and ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a grant of up to $12,000 from the Missouri Department of Economic Development, Division of Workforce Development, support of the Skill Up Project, depositing and appropriating said monies as set forth herein, and authorizing the county executive to execute necessary contracts or other documents. Bill number 141, introduced by Councilmember Tracus and ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept four grants totaling up to $646,923 from the Office of National Drug Control Policy, appropriating the same for support of police functions related to drug law enforcement, and authorizing the county executive to execute necessary documents. Bill number 142, introduced by Councilmember Tracus and ordinance appropriating and sending apart the sum of $2,080,000 in the inappropriate balance of the general fund in support of the St. Louis Economic Development Partnership. Bill number 143, introduced by Councilmember Tracus and ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with 5030 LLC for lease of space at 5030 Griffin Road for the third precinct station. Bill number 144, introduced by Councilmember Tracus and ordinance amending St. Louis County zoning ordinance and the official zoning district maps by changing the boundaries of the R2 Residence District and the CA Plan Commercial District and approving the application and preliminary plans as amended for the development in the CA Plan Commercial District of attractive land, subject to conditions PC 18-19, Dr. Dan Theobald. Bill number 145, introduced by Councilmember Tracus and ordinance appropriating the amount of $2,752,904 of Proposition P funds in the inappropriate balance of the general fund for support of compensation to Utility Associates Incorporated in connection with the contract authorized by ordinance number 27,251. Bill number 146, introduced by Councilmember Tracus and ordinance amending the St. Louis County zoning ordinance and zoning district maps by changing the boundaries of the C2 Shopping District and the CA Plan Commercial District and approving the application and preliminary plans for the development in the CA Plan Commercial District of attractive land, subject to conditions PC 15-19, Tom White. Bill number 147, introduced by Councilmember Tracus and ordnance amending the St. Louis County zoning ordinance and the official zoning district maps by changing the boundaries of the C1 Neighborhood Business District and the CA Plan Commercial District and approving the application and preliminary plans for development in the CA Plan Commercial District of attractive land, subject to conditions PC 13-19, Joseph Lo Piccolo. Mr. Presiding Officer, that is all the bills.
Thank you. Perfection of bills, please.
Bill number 17, introduced by Councilmember Fitch.
Please hold.
Bill number 17 is held.
Bill number 20, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
Please hold.
Bill number 20 is held.
Bill number 102, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
Please hold.
Bill number 102 is held.
Bill number 133, introduced by Councilmembers Tracus and Tracus for Clancy.
Move to perfect bill number 133. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 133 is perfected.
Bill number 134, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move to perfect bill number 134.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 134 is perfected.
Bill number 135, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move to perfect bill number 135. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Bill 135 is perfected.
Bill number 136, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
I'm gonna move to perfect this tonight, but I do want to, um, mention that, uh, with the leadership of the county executive, um, we're going to have a committee, the whole hearing on this bill within the next week, um, to, um, hear from the administration with respect to the needs for this supplemental appropriation. So with that, I will move to perfect bill number 136. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 136 is perfected.
Bill number 137, introduced by Councilmember Fitch.
I move to perfect bill number 137.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Bill, the motion carries. Bill number 137 is perfected.
Bill number 138, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move to perfect bill number 138. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill 138 is perfected. Final passage of bills.
Substitute bill number one for bill number 76, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Please hold. Bill substitute one for bill number 76 and substitute one for bill number 76 is held.
Substitute bill number one for bill number 83, introduced by Councilmembers Tracus, Harder, and Fitch.
Please hold. Bill, substitute bill one for bill number 83 and substitute bill one for number 83 is held.
Bill number 119, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for a final passage of bill number 119.
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Fitch, Councilmember Gray.
Yes.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number 119, there are four ayes and one absent.
Bill number 119 is finally passed.
Bill number 125, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I'd like to hold this, please.
Bill number 125 is held.
Bill number 127, introduced by Councilmember Walton Ray.
I move for final passage of bill 127.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Fitch, Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on bill number 127, there are four ayes and one absent.
Bill number 127 is finally passed.
Bill number 128, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move for final passage of bill number 128. Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Fitch. Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Bill number 128 is finally passed.
Bill number 129, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move for final passage of bill number 129. Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Fitch, Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on bill number 129, there are four ayes and one absent.
Thank you. Bill 129 is finally passed.
Bill number 130, introduced by Councilmembers Walton, Gray, and Clancy.
I move for final passage of bill number 130.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Fitch, Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number 130, there are four ayes and one absent.
Bill number 130 is finally passed.
Bill number 131, introduced by Councilmember Erby.
I move for final passage of bill number 131.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Fitch, Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on bill number 131, there are four ayes and one absent.
Bill number 131 is finally passed.
Bill number 132, introduced by Councilmember Erby.
Move for final passage of bill number 132.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Fitch, Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on bill number 132, there are four ayes and one absent.
Bill number...
Mr. Presiding Officer, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
We would, if, we may, there is a court date on this, um, tomorrow morning, so we would like to see if we could get you and, uh, the county executive to sign that bill right away.
For the record, bill 132 is finally passed and we'll go ahead and, uh, execute that immediately.
Moving on to resolutions, Mr. Presiding Officer, we have one additional resolution this evening. Resolution number one, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move for adoption of resolution number one.
Second.
Can I, um, go ahead? Can I move for a question on that?
Certainly.
Um, can you explain to us what the motivation is on that one? I was a little confused about the new storage places.
I'm interested in having the council consider an ordinance regarding the, um, approval of storage facilities within a certain distance of one another. So I want to take a look at the reasonableness of providing a minimum radius between storage facilities. Because frankly, in unincorporated St. Louis County, uh, we have plenty. And I'm not sure that I need them less than a half mile apart. So, um, I want to take a look at that. And that's what this, um, resolution begins to do is, is open a conversation in that respect.
So your intention is not to pass anything tonight other than to open up a conversation?
Other than the resolution, correct.
And that's the purpose of the resolution, to open up a conversation?
Yes. If you read it, that's what it says.
I, I also have a question. Is there a reason why that conversation couldn't be opened up via introduction of, of legislation?
This is what the county council's office advises, the proper procedure to do this. This is why I follow it. And I fully intend, uh, once this process is over, if legislation is needed to introduce it. But I think the, uh, requirements, as I understand it from the county council's office, is that this is the first step towards that, uh, process.
And is that because it's a, it's a zoning matter? And that's why it makes it unique?
In the zoning code, in order to amend the zoning code itself, there's various processes and the one to initiate by the council would be through the resolution of intent.
Any other questions? All right, so I'll reiterate the motion. I'll move for adoption of resolution number one. Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Fitch, Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on resolution number one, there are four ayes and one absent.
Resolution number one is adopted.
And sir, moving on to unfinished business. Item number one, Third District.
Please hold. So ordered.
Item number two, Third District.
Uh, please hold. So ordered.
Excuse me. Item number three, Third District.
Uh, please hold. So ordered.
Item number four, Seventh District.
Uh, please hold. So ordered.
Item number five, Sixth District.
County council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. And that will be the order.
Item number six, Sixth District.
Same, uh, motion and that will be the order.
Item number seven, Fourth District.
New liquor license to be approved as requested.
Sir, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number eight, Sixth District.
Change of order be approved as requested. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And Mr. Presiding Chair, moving on to new business. We have one prepared order this evening.
I move for the adoption of order number one.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Order number one is adopted. Motion to adjourn? Any comments?
Yeah, I just want to mention, uh, and I believe, uh, Councilman Tracus mentioned it earlier today. Uh, we went on a tour of the flooded areas in St. Louis County today and, uh, had some eye-opening experience on the devastation that this flood has brought, um, especially up in North area and the Alton area, uh, and in various parts of LeMay and, um, in North County as well. But, uh, as it was explained here today, uh, it seems that we're under control and, uh, we just need to make it through the next, uh, four or five days. And hopefully we'll see a downturn, uh, in this, uh, in the water level. But, uh, it is a lot of devastation and a lot of property damage, uh, in many areas of the metropolitan area, both on the Illinois side and the Missouri side of this. And it's gonna probably take us the rest of the year to, to dig out from this and get commerce back going the way it should be. So, uh, I want to thank our, um, esteemed, um, helicopter pilot here, uh, Mr. Dan Cunningham, uh, who else is also our protection here tonight. So he's kinda doing double duty. Um, but, uh, we had a good time and, and very safe. And, um, thank you very much and thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Harder, and I reiterate, uh, his sentiments. Officer Cunningham did an outstanding job piloting us around, showing us, uh, the various flooding. And I also want to reiterate my, uh, um, praise of the Department of Transportation and all the work they've done. Incredible job under, under pretty, uh, exigent circumstances. So job well done. Motion, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
All right, on another note, I wanted to commend Dr. Page and his administration for prioritizing, um, pay equity and work and, and, uh, the county workforce and women in the workforce. This is huge, um, the initiative that was announced today. And, you know, as a, as a working woman myself with a young child, I'm really excited about the difference that this is going to make for all families who, who, um, work within St. Louis County government. I know that there's still a lot of work ahead in terms of the feasibility of this[1670.33]